Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council Meeting. Adra, tonight's Monday, October 24th. Can you have the record show that our city attorneys present, city planners, city engineer, all council members, along with the assistant city administrator and the city administrator? At this time, I would like to ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item this evening, we have a special recognition. So I'm going to read kind of some information about it, and then I will invite the winner up to get her her certificate and her gift card. So we hosted a 2022 photo contest. This is the City of Atsigo's sixth annual photo contest. There were 10 participants that submitted a total of 33 photos. There were 544 votes were casted online and 149 that were cast during the Atsigo Prairie Festival. The city would like to present a certificate of recognition and a gift card to this year's viewer choice online winner, Mary Lou Mismatch, who submitted afternoon gold at Riverview Landing. Mary Lou received 193 votes and we're very thankful for her submission. And so at this time, I'd like to, I'll come down, we'll get a photo and Mary Lou will actually be in the photo this time. So I will show the council really quickly. This is her photo that she submitted. Like gorgeous. Very nice. She did a great job. So Mary Lou, would you like to come up, please?
Great piece under of the tension.
Go first. Thank you very much. A prize?
Surprise.
You get to go to Target after. It looks nice. For the audience, this is her photo. It's right over at Riverview Landing. And if you take a walk on the path out there, it's just something, it's just stunning. So we're going to turn this way and I'm just going to get our photo. Let's hold in your photo. Thank you.
Great pick, Mary. Good job.
So we are still under the open forum portion of the meeting. This is where you can come to the podium, state your name and address and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
Okay, you have to let me know if you can hear me.
We can hear you. Okay.
We are Tim and Lynn Nugent's. Our address is 13271 85th Street Northeast in Atsigo. We are here to talk about the No Discharge of Firearms Zone map. We want the map to be amended to make our property entirely in the no discharge zone. On September 11th, our house was hit with shotgun blasts from duck hunting. We filed a police report. On October 8th, our house was hit with, again with shotgun blasts from duck hunting. We filed a police report. On October 16th, our neighbor to the east had his house hit with shotgun blasts from the same hunting party. Our neighbor filed a police report. These are incidences that we are aware of only as we were all home at the time they occurred. There may have been many, many more instances that we aren't aware of. I can assure you, you do not know what it's like to have your house splattered with shotgun blasts unless you experience it yourself. It is alarming and unnerving to say the very least. I am still incredibly upset since the first experience happened on September 11th. Our expectation as homeowners is to feel safe and secure at all times in our home, in our homes and around our property. At present, I do not feel safe. I fear funding for my family's personal safety and damage to property. I do not feel comfortable allowing my grandchildren to go out and play in the background freely as they should be able to. The second part of the open forum that we wanted to present is to talk about the speed limit on 85th Street. It's currently 55 mph right at our as you turn to our driveway and prior to that is 40 mph. We want it dropped down to 40 mph from the 55 mph.
In front of its property.
I will turn this, Dan, do you have the switch screen so we can look at the no discharge map? Or Adam?
Mayor, Nugent's property is right here at the southwest corner of 85th Street and Nashua Avenue. It's one of the 20 acre parcels that's part of the Karen addition. So there's Danny McAlpine's houses immediately to the east and then there's another 20 acre parcel that's east of the Nugent's and south of McAlpine's at the corner of 83rd Street and Nashua Avenue. That's where the hunting is occurring. So currently, the no discharge zone is set up in the city code basically is designated over urbanized areas of the city. Where there are typically residential flats of acreage lots or smaller. The no discharge zone does not apply outside of those urbanized areas. Except for 500 feet of either side of major collector or arterial streets, basically on the idea that there's more urbanized traffic on those roadways. So to keep properties or firearms and discharge away from those roadways. But even within the areas where discharge of a firearm is allowed, the city code prohibits discharge of a firearm within 500 feet of a building not owned by you unless you have the owner's permission. That situation would apply in this case. The Nugent's property is highlighted. The hunting is occurring on the property to the east-southeast. Basically along this wetland area and sounds like shooting backwards to the northwest. So under the city code, the proper action would be enforcement by the sheriff's office of discharge regulations that are currently within the city code. The map is updated each year. It's reviewed and needs to be published prior to hunting season started. So mending the map is an issue the council could look at in the future, but this area is rural. These are 20 acre parcels surrounded by other large contiguous tracts of property. So it isn't necessarily consistent with how the map's been applied in other areas in the past.
Has, this is a question for the residents. When the police reports were filed, do you know if they were able to then go talk with the party that was hunting? And they did a ticket issued to them since they went?
We had a DNR go one day over there and then the sheriff department went places people.
So what was the outcome?
And so I am here.
That's why we're here.
Because they haven't had no answers yet.
We're not okay and we're not, and I, you know, like I said, the personal safety issue is extreme. To me, it's, I should never, no one should ever feel that they're uncomfortable in their home or around their property, right?
Especially out here with your 20 acres.
And I don't want to not, I don't want to be concerned about allowing my grandchildren to go out in the backyard and play. Right. I kind of feel that concern right now and I'm not okay with that.
You shouldn't be. So we have Jason Altman's with the Wright County Sheriff's Department here. I don't know if he's able to come up and speak to this. Perfect. He just shook his head. So I guess, you know, as Dan said, in our code, it reads that they're not supposed to be shooting. They're supposed to be 500 feet away from buildings.
Well, they're not 500 feet away because it hit Danny's house. Danny, from the Danny's house to the pond is 165 feet. To where they're shooting from that pond is probably another 150 feet. Where they got their little stand set up on the, in the cattails. Because Danny measured his place today.
Okay.
And so we went and talked to the parents that day. They, and she was in total denial that shotgun blast could hit our house. So she's just like not someone I want to talk to, I guess, anymore. And they did come over, you know, sort of apologize, you know, but they're just trying to butter me up. So they let, come on our land and go hunting off our side. And like, no, not.
Jason, can you come up and comment, please?
I gotta keep you away from the stand here. I gotta steal this mic. Thanks. So yeah, so I would guess I would kind of refer this almost to a similar situation with some of the residents that we have on the south part of the Odean Avenue, South 70th Street. We have the DNR land over there that we've had issues with in the past with some of the hunting that occurs on the DNR property down there. And, you know, the direction of some of this birdshot and where that's landing. I've had a buckshot or a birdshot land in the backyard of a residence. I believe it's on 67th Street of Oakwood. The, I think we look at two different things. We have the no firearm discharge zone through the city. That's going to be a misdemeanor. The county attorney's office, as I've had conversations with city staff on misdemeanor level crimes with, you know, city ordinances and how the county attorney's office likes to interpret those. That's going to be a little bit more difficult. As we found out, because there are certain hunting rights, I don't mean to demean hunting rights. I absolutely support that. However, I look at the city, or excuse me, the state statute for reckless discharge of a firearm, which frankly just says anybody who recklessly discharges a firearm within a municipality is guilty of a crime. So to me, we have a residence, clearly somebody's living there. It's not as if there's a lot of cover. To me, that seems like the violation versus the city code, and that's how I'd like it to be enforced. I would agree with the the residents that it's not as if it just happened one time. It's not like there was just some random noises or something like that where it could be brushed off. It's happened three separate times. So I'd like to speak with the county attorney's office to go for reckless discharge of a firearm and have the enforcement gone that way. And that's a felony. I'm not saying we need to have a charge put in place where we're charging the public, however, from a standpoint of that's all serious, the state considers that crime. So that's how I'd like to handle it from here is to use that. I had a conversation with the, one of the residents the other day. I tend to agree with them as far as the way he described it to me and the way I've read one of the reports so far, as I would agree, something needs to be done. I think we've just run into issues in the past as far as hunters' rights and trying not to I guess, impede on those. However, I think this is a different situation than kind of the ones I was referring to that have happened on the DNR land on Odean Avenue.
So can you give them your number so that we're putting you in charge of making sure that we're dealing with this? As you said, the way you can charge it through the county level with this reckless hunting is a bigger ticket, potentially a felony versus a misdemeanor.
That's, again, that's my interpretation of it, and that's how I intend to proceed.
Okay. Counsel?
Mayor, just a question for Dan. In looking at the no discharge map that we have right now, if we were going to expand it, what would the process look like and how quick could we expand?
So Mayor, the way city code outlines the process that the new map effective for this hunting season needs to be adopted prior to September so that it's in place. So there isn't a really means to change the map for this year at this point to exclude those three properties for that quadrant.
And then is it, so obviously then you look at 85th and there, as you said, there could be issues, other land tracts. So we've got 20 acre parcels south of 70th Street that north up by 39 where these then become potentially issues too as people?
Correct. I mean theoretically, you're dealing with a 20 acre parcel. So you should be able to discharge a firearm on the property in a responsible manner. That's obviously not happening. So, you know, the first recourse should be a Sergeant Altman's outlined is deal with the regulations that are in place and as a last resort, consider changing the map.
Jason, anything else on?
Yeah. So the, the only concern I have with on my end, you know, with what I've outlined of how I want to proceed is certainly I don't want my message to be misconstrued as just aim your gun at a different angle so that it's not reckless, because I don't know if that's just going to continue to put us in the same situation of, oh, sorry, that bird was a little higher than I thought it was. Because that's what we've kind of dealt with in the past of, sorry, I it went at a different angle. It wasn't meant to be reckless. It was meant to, and that's where that DNR versus the state versus the city, things all kind of fall on top of each other and kind of still. I would like to, I guess, review how this case proceeds with my first part. And then if I need to have a conversation with Dan about whether or not that, the firearm discharge zone, this, not sure if it had been brought up, but it's a new house. So as, as the city is expanding, certainly we have to review whether or not that map needs to be changed. I'd like to review that. And I guess if I have a recommendation for Dan, we'll discuss that after I can kind of get the first part.
All right. So we'll wait for an update. Adam can get us that information on Friday. If we already have it for our weekly updates or as soon as possible, once you guys have that. Are you able to leave your card with them?
Yes, I just, I just was going to ask, but Jason, you kind of basically answered my question of, you know, has this happened before? And to your point, Jason, these are new homes coming in. I think it's a great idea to take a look at the map. You and Dan, because I think there might be some changes we need to make moving forward. So great idea.
Thank you. Their next item was speed limit 55 miles in front of their house. I believe that's, I'm going to turn that over to Ron on that one.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, there's a roundabout in less than a quarter mile and we reviewed this, the public work supervisor and, and myself. The Nugent driveway is the last driveway or the first driveway, depending which way you look at it before it becomes completely rural and there's no access to the road besides field entries. That's all the way to the middle school entry past Mason. Right now, there's a sign that says reduce speed because of a roundabout coming up as you're right on the Nugent's property or right in front of the Nugent's property. You know, you could start the 55 after these 20 acre parcels. Or as you're going towards it right at that, I don't know how much difference that's going to make with already having the sign that says reduce speed ahead. But when this road was constructed, it was when we still had to go by the state statutes, statutes for speed limits. And then we had to design it for 55 miles an hour. This does meet all the standards for 55 mile an hour, the curves and the vertical, vertical curves and horizontal curves. We just didn't feel it was necessary with the signage that was already in place. But it certainly could be moved further to the, to the west some.
Because when they come out of that roundabout, young people, they over accelerate. And I know they're doing 70 when they come by my house. And it's
They're not doing 75, right? Jason will have to sit out there even longer.
So yeah, we'd like to get
How, how?
Yeah, how was? They seen they loaded up by the school. Soon as that school was getting ready to open up, that speed limit dropped. And I thought, well, now they can come over here and drop, pull a sign out, put a 40 up. I'm sure the city's got some laying around somewhere.
Do we have to do, so as you said, when we first put it in, it was designed to states statutes at the time for 55. We went ahead and did a traffic study and have now things in place that if residents request for speed lowering, what do we need to do for you to evaluate if that in fact could be lowered at that spot?
Well, we gotta look at how many, how many driveways we have in that area. I don't think it's going to hit the density that we were talking about when we put together that matrix. So it won't hit that matrix based on the density of the area right there coming into the roundabout. And it does have off street trail. But we do have very few 55 mile an hour city streets through, I mean, we, of course, county has those. But the city doesn't have too many 55 mile an hour streets.
Ron, quick question. So about 55 mile an hour is not on the stretch of 85th, isn't that long because you have the roundabout of Nassau and then it's, what is it, 40 then after the roundabout, I believe? And then you have the roundabout and then you're coming towards the school and it's 55 there and then it turns right to 40.
It's 50 all the way across.
A mile and a quarter of 55 at this point. Of course, you're, you're having to break for the roundabout in the last quarter mile.
Correct.
If you're heading east.
Okay.
In the opposite direction, they're probably accelerating coming out of the
Right.
roundabout, trying to get up to 55 and potentially faster.
Yeah. So if we were to back it up the 40 as we, where would you put that then? Mid, the middle of the next property? Because once they see the 55, are they going to start accelerating that?
Yeah, you, if there's a 55 coming out of the roundabout, I don't recall exactly where that one's located. We could move it beyond the last driveway.
Sure.
And then you'd have to set the 40 before you enter into the, the three driveways in that quarter mile. There's actually four if you count the one on the north side.
That's the new house on the north too.
Correct. All, most, a lot of those homes, you know, except for McAlpine and Garrity. The two of them are new and the two closest ones to the roundabout were in existence when, when the drive, when the road was built.
And Mayor?
Yeah.
The property on the north side to right up against Nashua, that parcel has three development rights. Quick. So it could be further subdivided at some point.
Okay. Tom?
Senator, Ron, when we came up with that matrix, we had to come up with reasoning and rationale to satisfy any issues we might have if people contested in the future. What could we do? And this is maybe something we can look at further. What can we do to maybe modify that matrix if we were going to change kind of that matrix and saying, hey, if you have so many development rights or so many driveways that access the road or?
Yeah, maybe change it to how many development rights are in that potential area. Because if
Cause on that would be a lot.
Put in there, you know, you're getting up towards probably that density that would call for the 40.
But we needed to do that in order to sit there and justify lowering or adjusting the speed limits where we did. And so I just want to make sure that we can come up with some sort of rationale to justify.
Yeah, we want to continue to follow the matrix. Is it, it follows reasoning as to why speed limits should be lowered.
But as you said, if we count the three development rights, then we are meeting the dust density.
I'd have to double check on that. Then you'd be up to yeah, seven or eight, one, two, three, four, seven. Seven driveways in a quarter mile.
So we have
But that's also to help Sergeant Holtman and the officers if they were to issue a ticket that it'll, it'll stand and they can't just sit there and say, no, we don't have to.
Yeah. The problem with dropping the entire street to 40 without any access and having a good line of vision is it doesn't feel like a 40 mile an hour road because there's not all the, the homes that are along it. And it's just going to be difficult to enforce a 40 mile an hour speed zone through that entire area. I know it's only a mile, a quarter or a mile. It's just it, it doesn't feel like you should be driving 40. I mean, if we put a maximum speed on any given street in the city at, at 50 or something like that, that might be worthwhile looking. I think we'd have to do a speed wagon along there, see what the average speed is and see if it makes sense. I mean, if, if everyone's going 55 and, and using it as a 55, you know, dropping it, the only way to enforce it is, is to have a police officer out there handing out tickets. Because it feels right to drive 55 and it's designed for 55. And again, that wasn't because the city wanted it to be a 55 mile an hour road. That's just what the state required at the time in order for us to use our state aid funds on that road.
All right. So how can we proceed? I think we should evaluate since we've talked about development rights. The homes being, now there being seven lots. And then can you get back to us on that?
Yeah, I think we'll run
Need a speed wagon study?
Speed wagon set out there before the weather gets incremental because I know we don't want to put the speed wagons on the side of the roads when the weather's not good. Just, it's, it's kind of a hazard in, in bad weather and get those counts and speeds and then also take a look at the matrix and what it says in regards to number of driveways to get to 40.
Counsel, are you good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
So right now we got four driveways that come out of that roundabout going west. And serious, they're going in excess of 55 miles per car. Not all of them, but a lot of people. You know, and then when you're turning in your driveway, you think you're going to get rear ended sometimes. Because you still gotta, because cars coming from the west going east, you're coming into that corner just by our driveway. You actually have to look before you make that turn. Make sure there's no one coming around then. So I just don't want no one to get wrapped in the fun.
Ron will get the information and we just need to make sure that we're meeting a matrix because as we said, we did a matrix on how we can lower it and we want to make sure that this sticks and that.
If you're waiting for three more lots down to the west, that could be 10 years from now.
We're not, it's not that we're waiting for the lots to develop. We know that there's rights to those lots. So that's what we're going to be counting. Those already having rights as though there's a house there. So it's not that we're waiting for that lots to go in, but if that's the way you took it, it was just, we were saying that we have, we know there's development rights to the north of you.
Great. Yeah.
Trying to problem solve a way to get around just there being the three or the four access points.
To say that there's more houses. So then that could meet our
Yeah.
Mayor. Yes.
The key is the city has to have engineering data to support changing the speed limit. We can't just take your word for it, set a speed limit and assume that it would stand up if challenged. So what the engineers outline is basically put the speed wagon, now they're documenting travel volumes and speeds and then work backwards to see if it's justified based on potential development in the area, your existing driveway sightlines to lower that speed.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello there, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dennis McAlpine. I live at 13355 85th Street now. I've lived there for 50 years. It's been a long time and I guess I have two issues here pertaining to the the new road. Somebody's going to get killed. Nobody lives around there, but I've lived there for 50 years. And it's young kids on a motorcycle, these young kids on these cars. It's not us old farts. It's the young kids, they come around that corner and they kick it in the butt. And they're going 70 miles an hour. That's, that's, something's going to happen and it's probably going to be too late for you to sit here and say, well, we should have did something. My neighbor, Jen- Uh, my neighbor Jennifer, she pulls out onto that road, my neighbor to the east. The way that driveway was constructed. She has one heck of a time. When she's coming out of the east to get into her driveway, if the. Traffic is coming out of the west. She has to wait because it narrows right down there to, it comes right down to nothing. And when she wants to get her mailbox. She cannot pull over, she has to pull in her driveway, walk around, and even at that point, she could possibly, several times she could possibly get clips. I mean, there's, there's just no, no respect. I mean, I, I don't know what's going on with this country, but someone, and I'm concerned about her. You know, I'm old enough, if I, if I get hit, it's a good thing. But. They're young and they're, uh, it's the construction of that was not thought out a bit. It should have been coming back. Like they did my driveway. They told me that I had to go farther west. I said, okay, let's move it west. And her driveway should have been moved west also because as you can see, it is narrowing down even more so when it gets to a driveway, it's very, very narrow. The speed limit is just unbelievable. I see it every day. And, uh, it's probably slowing down a little bit now because the, uh, vehicles aren't outrun, you know, rodding around and stuff like that, but. They're still there. I just don't wanna, I myself. If I pull out on that road. And I pull out with my truck. I have to look to the west. To make darn sure that there's not a vehicle coming at fifty miles an hour. I look and I go and then. My helper, he, they said, hey, hey, look, look out. I said, well, where in the hell did he come from? And they come around there, they're exceeding fifty-five, sixty miles an hour. And how in the heck did he get there that quick? And that's every morning. I drive this road every day, both directions all around. That's, uh. That's a problem. I hope nobody gets killed. Because of this, the way that was constructed and the, and the speed zone. I, we're gonna leave it at that and let you handle that. I mean, it's just that I see it every day. I, I mean, it's almost at the point where I'm gonna buy a movie camera and, uh, take picture of these guys just rotting around and just. Raising completely hell out there on the road, but it won't do me any good. Now, the other situation. Is, uh, not last Sunday, but the Sunday before I was out. My, uh, sweetheart and I came back. Went out for lunch, breakfast rather, came home sitting around Sunday morning. All of a sudden, boom, 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 boom. Oh my God, and then all of a sudden. Here's BB sitting inside of the house. I said, oh, come on. So. I get up and I go out on my deck. I said, hey. What the heck is going on out there? And there's a young kid out there. And he hollers to me, sorry, Mac. I said, sorry doesn't cut it. Shoot. The right directions. Okay, okay, you know, but. It's, uh. It's ignorance on their part. I mean. My neighbor to the, to the east, the gym, you can't shoot that way. They can't shoot my way to the north. Tim's place is to the west and then my neighbors is to the east, so they only have a little window there to shoot. But in order for him to hit, he had to swing around and shoot back this way. He had to almost do a one-eighty. In order to hit my house, you know, and. He's a young, he's a young kid. He's about fifteen years old. He doesn't have. The, uh. What do you wanna call it? The schooling or whatever behind him. He's, he's young. He should be, someone should be down there with him.
Mm-hmm, right.
But there isn't. And what I did.
And Mayor, just, uh, real quick, God, Dennis don't mean to interrupt you, but where was he?
Hey, I can't hear you. I got a bad ears.
Where, where was he on this map when?
On this map? He was right down, hey, you're, you're right there, you're. No, where's my place?
Your place is right there.
I can't. Yeah, there's my place. Yeah, he's right down below the pond, right further towards Tim's. Yeah.
Uh, right on that kinda point that bend there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have a talk there.
And, uh, that's, that's where he was. He was. He was, he was, uh, covered up, you know? So I went down this afternoon when I got back from fixing a well and I pulled out a three hundred foot tape. And I've been having this trouble for. The first ten years, the first twenty, the first thirty, then it kinda died down. And it hasn't, I haven't had this problem and now I'm fifty years this year. And I'm tired of it. So I measured from my house. To the water. Which was a hundred and sixty-six feet. To the water, that's not the cat, that's a hundred and sixty-six feet. So the ruling says five hundred. But the dangerous part about this all is I did little research as in when you're hunting ducks. They say that the average shot that you should take. Is within. Fifty, fifty yards. That's a hundred and fifty feet. But the dangerous part of it is, once you shoot that direct, once you shoot it. The projectile can go. With that shot. Can go up to three hundred and seventy-five. Feet. With that bird shot. The next bird shot. At two, it can go up to two hundred and fifty yards. As a number six, a number three or four, what a lot of people use for ducks. That can go up to nine hundred feet after you shoot. And geese, they don't do too much geese, but believe it or not. A geese. Shot will go up to four thousand two hundred feet. And we all know that there's five thousand two hundred and eighty feet in a mile. So, uh, a goose shot will go. A long, long ways. My house has been hit several, several times. I've re-sited, I've. Done everything. I tried to, you know, I was a hunter at one time. I tried to deal with everybody. But it's gotten to a point where. I'm concerned about. Like my grandson or my granddaughters come down. You know, it is only a hundred, my drive, my lawn was right down to the pond. I got it all. Landscaped and everything else. Whether or not they'd be out there. On a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning, I doubt it at seven o'clock. But they could be out there in the middle of the afternoon when they're back hunting in the afternoon. And they could get hit. They could, and, uh. That's, I'd be, that'd be terrible for a young child or even. An older person were, were to get hit in the eye or something like that. Through a mistake like this. So what is wrong with moving? Using eighty-third? Because on the other side, gunners own the property on across from eighty-third and that's all farmland. East of me. On eighty-third on this, on this side of the pond. You know, it's all gonna be residential. But eighty-third would be. A good. Place for that. No shoot zone. Because that itself is, uh. Well, I never measured out, but, uh, it's a good distance. DeMarzis Farm is in between me. And DeMarzis Farm is about eight hundred feet long. So it's, it's a couple of thousand feet. From. Our residence over to eighty-third. And you know, whether, I don't, I don't know what you're gonna do with eighty-third, you're gonna. Tear that up or, you know, you, there's something in the plans for eighty-third, but using that as a benchmark and moving everything away. I've, uh. I don't come out, I don't come down here very often, but. Uh, when you, when you're woken up Sunday morning and, uh, when there's, uh. Shells hitting the side of your house, rather BBs hitting the side of your house, you say, come on. What's going on here? And probably what it is, the fact that they're not being. It's just a young child down there. He's fifteen years old. His father's not a hunter. But he went to schooling. I mean, he, he had all the necessary, uh, requirements to handle a weapon. But he's down there by himself. And you know well as I do, as the excitement of a bird gets up. You know, you just, you lose everything right there. So it's. Something that we have to address. And that's why I came down here tonight to explain my. Part of it, you know, and just, and as far as the ladies are concerned, I was, I was awful surprised myself of the distance that they say is the dangerous. You're not gonna kill a duck. At seven hundred and fifty feet or nine hundred feet, you're not gonna shoot a duck. But the projectile, the, the BBs itself have the potential to. Hurt someone if they're hit in the face. Probably not in the back, you just have BBs in your back, but in the face and, and you could take an eye on it. That's, that's probably the extreme. Problem right there, but. That's it.
Right.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Patience and time.
Yeah, thank you for all your. Your stats on looking up BBs. Dan. Grab that information. Um. Can you include when you reach out to? Um, Tim and Lynn that you include?
Danny, Danny as well, yes.
Thank you.
I, I called Ron, but he must have been busy, didn't return my call. Did, get ahold of us to see what's the problem, what we can do, you know, but. He's a busy man.
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we still are under open forum. Do you have any other comments? Tom?
Man, Mayor, uh, just a follow-up, just a little bit. Oh, uh, on what, uh, Mr. McAlpine was talking about, when we come up with the five hundred. Uh, foot. Is, I mean, I, I know there's a difference between birdshot, buckshot. Um, but, uh, that's a DNR.
Mayor, so the DNR uses five hundred feet discharge from any public lands to any building not occupied by you. So we mirror that standard.
Okay.
Is that something that, uh, maybe Dave, you could look at too, whether we can expand that or whether we should?
Yeah, I can look at that. I, I think you could use that, you could change it. The, the DNR guideline would be the basis or the. Starting points that you can always change if you need to. You've got the authority to change your local organs.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Mulcare. Address nine, five, six, zero, Parkington Avenue, northeast, Atsigo, Minnesota. Uh, we could talk about anything up here. I know that later on agenda is this multi-family housing issue. I'd like to talk about that a little bit.
Sure, we can take your comments now, actually, um. Are we fine with that? I mean, it was, it's not a. There wasn't a public hearing that closed. Is it fine to take it with the?
The public hearing at the planning commission was closed. It's a concept plan, so it's your discretion if you would like to take any comments.
I can take comments. I'm open to that, so.
Okay. Just a few comments on there. One.
Sure.
Uh, large unit like that, I was at the planning commission meeting in the week. On that and the, based where. People are hammering the traffic thing to death, which. Extremely important to hammer that because of the traffic there is just nuts. The issues I have on there is they wanna put the intersections when they. Plan a future development of that property, they're going across ninety-fourth and ninety-sixth lane. It's already been. Talked about with the previous people up here, the traffic here. Parkington Avenue is a drag strip. If they put the, put cross. Intersections in there, they're gonna have to put stop signs or call this, or roundabouts in it. So you have to redevelop that area plus taking down a few houses. I'm also against having three hundred units stuck in that one corner there. It's just. It's not a good use of the property. I know they wanna put this huge place in there. Go smaller properties, go townhouses. You got a unique property there. I know on the planning commission, they said one-on-one is their development framework. Something else. Put townhouses or some other deal on the river there. I hate to say this, but I grew up in Dayton, I grew up in Brooklyn Center, I grew up, I lived in Rockford for a while. I looked at these large complexes like this. They change ownerships in ten or fifteen years. The individual investment groups want their ROI raised. They will cut back on amenities, they will cut back on maintenance. After a while, they will just say. No, we're just gonna take the government checks because we don't have to worry about the hassles. I for one do not wanna move. If that building does progress, progress through, I'm gonna move. I know a lot of my neighbors are gonna move because we do not. Want to deal with that many rental properties that close to our house. I did make a suggestion of putting a building further south. Like whether Aldi's was proposed. And that farm stood there. Or taking that particular property and have the city buy it. You could do it like Rogers did with the baseball. Complex there, make a sports complex out with trails along the river, river. They did discuss that. Park Commission doesn't have that kinda money right now, but. I'm just throwing out different ideas. It's a unique property, it's a unique spot. And yes, they're gonna be below, south of the power lines. You can't build under, under the power lines except for parking lots. You're gonna start putting a whole mess of housing there and they're not gonna stop with the one building. They're gonna go north of the thing. They're gonna put six more units up there. And that is going to look like Brooklyn Center real quick. And you guys talk about the police department? Well, you guys will have to get your own police department. And the tax money you get from those buildings are gonna have to pay for these departments. Because of all the service calls. I can list apartments after apartments after apartments. I used to live in the city of Rockford. We moved out when the DEA and ATF were sitting at the end of my driveway because of a rental building. Had a bunch of people squatting in there and they robbed the hardware store. Not saying that's gonna happen here, but. Like I said before, we, we gotta find a better use for that property than apartments. You know, huge buildings. I mean, I even talked to a couple of people there and I said, do something cool. I don't know if you guys ever heard of Heritage Square in Minneapolis. They took down the projects off fifty-five and ninety-four. They took down the projects, all these government type style Soviet buildings. They built cottages. Each cottage contains twelve units and garages. It was a multi-income development, yeah. Higher income, middle income and lower income. Unfortunately, in Minneapolis, it all became lower income. These buildings are gorgeous. I used to work for Sears and I was actually in most of those units. Putting in appliances. They're gorgeous. If you do it right, you can say, hey, we're gonna sell up, or we're gonna sell sixty of those. And you can sell them as individual buildings, you can sell them as condos. It's just a different concept instead of these Soviet style big giant block housings that are gonna look. Modern now, but ten years from now, they're gonna look like an ice room. Oh, that was built in twenty twenties. I don't, I. I said my piece on that. The other thing is where they're talking about Quad A Avenue. For future development on there. You're gonna have to look at Parish Avenue for. People trying to cross that. I'm al- already just about getting rear ended when I go onto ninety-fourth to get to my neighborhood. All the time, cause people, there is no turn lane there, so they hop in the side, hop in the shoulder. I'm amazed nobody's rolled their car yet, driving in the ditch. But unfortunately, we're a town with lousy drivers. So.
Or maybe they're.
Laughing because it's.
Maybe they're from the others, maybe they're from the other cities passing through.
It's all over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all over.
I hated the roundabout when you guys first put him in, but they've been a blessing in disguise because of. Nobody has a clue about, hey, right turn permitted after stop on red. I couldn't tell me times I made a left turn over there by the gas station and almost got creamed by somebody coming out like. Well, I could ride it after stop. Anyway.
James, I'm gonna have to stop you, but, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're still in our open forum. Any other comments? All right, we will close the open forum. And move to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? There ain't nothing, we, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
My second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item three, our consent agenda. Motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Brittany.
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda that's written.
My second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one, Norah Hard apartment complex. I'll turn this over to Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we've received a concept plan for a mixed use development. Uh, from Norah Hart, uh, their first phase being a multiple family building within the project. Um, the zoning ordinance establishes a process for review of concept plans essentially to provide. Feedback to the developer as to the acceptability of their land use prior to them investing in, uh, preparation of detailed engineering plans or studies. Um, the action that's before the planning commission and city council does not constitute. An approval in any form. Uh, if the developer chooses to move forward, they would have to apply separately for zoning map amendment. A development stage plan approval as well as a subdivision plat of the property. Uh, each one of those applications requires a public hearing. Because this is an informal comment period, the plan, planning commission and city council have broad discretion to either support or not support a proposal. Uh, so the property in question is, uh, located, uh, east of County Road forty-two, Parish Avenue, north of the Atsigo waterfront development. It's the Richard Baffet Farmstead. Uh, this property was guided by the twenty-twelve Conference of Plan for Commercial Land Uses. But in twenty eighteen. But in twenty eighteen, as part of the multiple family housing study, uh, the planning commission and city council reviewed and recommended changing the guided land use. To maintain commercial along the highway one oh one frontage. And allow for potential mixed use or residential development along Parish Avenue as a transition to the west. Uh, under the policies of the comprehensive plan, again, the property remains zoned A one agricultural district, limiting development until. The city deems it appropriate to rezone, uh, or. Land uses guided by the comprehensive plan. To the south is the Atsigo Waterfront Development, uh, to the west are one acre lots established prior to the city incorporating in nineteen ninety. Uh, to the north is a large, uh. Farmstead and cultivated fields that are planned for future urban development as part of the East Sewer District. So the twenty eighteen housing study was referenced quite a bit in reviewing this application with the planning commission. Uh, based on the policies of the comprehensive plan to define, uh, a range of housing types within the city and also locations and timing appropriate for those. Types of housing units, uh, as an alternative to single family dwellings. The recommendations were a ten percent cap on the number of total dwelling units within the city being allocated to multiple family dwellings. With the existing buildings that are in place, uh, there's potentially four hundred and forty dwelling units that could be constructed within that cap. Uh, ideally, these will be located adjacent to commercial uses for market support, uh, concentration of people to buy goods and services. Alternatively located near industrial areas to provide locations for employees to reside. There was also discussion as part of the multiple family housing state, looking at development standards for, uh, multiple family dwellings moving forward. The first alternative that Norhart proposed would have been at the, uh, southeast corner of. Parish Avenue and Ninety-fourth Street with Quade Avenue being extended on the east side of the site. North from Atsigo Waterfront. The development would have been occurring on approximately five acres with two hundred and fifty-four dwelling units. Would have been a five-story building that had four hundred parking stalls and a hundred and thirty-four garage stalls, there would have been potential on the north side of ninety-fourth. Fourth Street and east of Quade Avenue for just over eighty-three thousand square feet of commercial uses. Uh, based on comments made at the initial planning commission meeting where this application was reviewed, developers submitted a second alternative. Uh, locating the building east of Quade Avenue, uh, basically at the southeast corner of the property. Uh, it's shown on the nineteen point six six acres. East of Quade Avenue, but actually only seven acres is developed from the, uh, power line easement south. Uh, there would be three hundred and seven units with this concept plan, still a five-story building, five hundred and eighteen parking stalls. Um, and the areas west of Quade Avenue would yield a slightly smaller sixty thousand square feet of commercial uses. Looking at the comparison of the two alternatives regarding the standards from the R seven. Residential high density district in the housing study, uh, the main issue the planning commission focused in on was the proposed density or the lot area per unit. Ultimately, after their second meeting reviewing the application, the planning commission was firm that the proposed development would need to conform to the minimum lot area requirement of one thousand. Or two thousand square feet per dwelling unit, the other issues they were willing to consider perhaps based on. Uh, rational basis or engineering studies, um, but their preference as stated was to rely on the standards. Uh, adopted either as part of the R seven district or has been recommended by the housing study. Uh, the planning commission had tabled the discussion of the application from their August fifteenth meeting after the developer indicated they had. Initiated a traffic study to look at the impacts, the proposed development to Quade Avenue, uh, wanting to have that study to inform their. Support or not support for the project, uh, so looking at the existing conditions, uh. Roadway is designated by Wright County as a minor arterial and this concurrent configuration with two lanes of traffic and shoulders. Uh, it can carry up to ten thousand trips per day. City engineer provided traffic volume dating back to two thousand showing annual growth, uh, pre-pandemic of two percent. After the pandemic, uh, and not unsurprisingly, traffic dropped back to seventy-three hundred cars per day. Uh, but now in twenty twenty-two with the one sixty-nine project underway, traffic volumes have increased, uh, the numbers shown are ninety-six fifty. From Ninety-fourth Street South, eighty-five fifty north of Ninety-fourth Street. Wright County indicates that. The future capacity improvements that would likely be considered along Parish Avenue to accommodate additional. Uh, trips per day would include restriping the road, uh, as a three-lane roadway with a dedicated center turn. Essentially think of County Road nineteen west of Odine Avenue, uh, that would eliminate the shoulders and also necessitate the need to construct a trail. From, uh, where the current trail ends at Atsigo Waterfront east of the bridge, because otherwise there wouldn't be opportunity for any pedestrians on the roadway. Uh, you'd look for turn lanes at the intersections ultimately planning that those accesses that would be full movement in the future. Uh, Ninety-sixth Street and Ninety-fourth would need to be planned eventually to accommodate roundabouts. Uh, their recommendation is also that before twenty forty, the intersection at Parish Avenue and Park Avenue essentially coming out of. Uh, Atsigo Waterfront or from the Boone docks area needs to be limited to three-quarter movement so that. You can't turn left from Park Avenue to northbound Parish or to southbound Parish coming the other direction. Uh, that would alleviate the existing congestion occurring at that intersection. Um, the table referenced is from the traffic study, uh, and as explained at the planning commission. The markers level of service is a measure of congestion at either each intersection based on a delay encountered by the traveling. Motorist, uh, through that intersection indicating, uh, the likely delay and also the peak or worst movement. Uh, intersection, so under the existing conditions, the only. T deteriorated condition at level E or less is at Main Street, uh, and Parish Avenue in the city of Elk River. So then the traffic study looked at the traffic that would be generated by the two alternatives. Uh, from this, you can also derive the traffic that would be generated if the property developed entirely with commercial uses. Uh, alternative one had more commercial uses on the concept plan than did alternative two. So, uh, it generates more traffic based on the fact that commercial generates more traffic than do apartments. But you can see the range of traffic uses that are then used as a basis to evaluate the impacts of the development to Parish Avenue. Uh, within the development, they would be required to extend Quade Avenue to the north property line, uh, to provide a second way in and out of the area and also Ninety-fourth Street between Parish. Avenue and Quade Avenue with signal or with, uh, turn lanes at each of those, um, intersection locations. Looking at first, uh, traffic impacts, if the project didn't happen and it was just. Regular regional background growth, uh, occurring within the city. Looking at twenty twenty-four, basically the existing condition with only congestion at Main Street and Elk River. Uh, under twenty forty no build scenario, uh, the PM afternoon peak hour is failing in Elk River. Uh, the morning intersection is also experiencing congestion. But the one thing noted in the study is that there was adequate stacking. Distance at each of these intersections for, uh, the movements required, so there's not interference yet with traffic occurring. Looking at alternative one, uh, it does create, begin to generate the congestion at, uh. Parish Avenue and Park Avenue, that was identified for the three-quarter intersection. Uh, and it also advances then the congestion at Parish Avenue and Main Street. You can see in the twenty forty scenario, again, Ninety-fourth Street. Uh, would have some congestion, but it's important to note that's traffic trying to exit from the development onto Parish Avenue, so it's not actually causing congestion on Parish itself. Uh, the alternative build began the problematic intersection at Main Street, uh, in Elk River, same issue at Ninety-fourth Street in twenty forty. Uh, and then the existing conditions, again. All have adequate stacking distance except for, uh, westbound Main Street coming off of Highway ten to turn left, uh, to southbound Parish. The conclusion of the traffic study is that in her existing conditions, the, um, intersections all function adequately, twenty forty. They would all also function adequately except for, uh, westbound Ninety-fourth Street to Parish Avenue. Uh, and there's some issue with the queuing lanes, um, so with the planned improvements both by Wright County and the improvements required of the developer. Roadway within the city of Atsigo has adequate capacity. Main Street in Elk River remains a long-term problem that needs to be solved with, uh, regional input, uh, and it's. Likely to occur whether this development happens or not, so this, this development isn't going to exacerbate the problem. Uh, but it is going to. Basically lead to the same conclusion that intersection needs to be addressed. So the planning commission held their public hearing on August fifteenth, which the city does to ensure transparency of, uh, concept plan reviews. Uh, state laws does not require the city to hold a public hearing for a concept plan, but the city does so. Planning commission did take comments and questions at that meeting, and as I said, it was tabled to allow completion of the traffic study. They resumed consideration of the meeting on October seventeenth, um, because it is a concept plan and doesn't have, uh, necessarily legal standing. With regards to a decision by the city, the chair did allow additional public comments and questions. Uh, especially given the fact that the traffic study was new information and there was an alternative concept plan submitted. Uh, but the planning commission did vote to support the concept plan as presented, uh, alternative two on the east side of Quade Avenue. Subject to sixteen comments, uh, that were outlined in the planning report that you have in your packet, they did modify the one requirement to state that. Uh, the proposed development would have to comply with the lot area per unit requirement, so, uh, no additional flexibility considered. Uh, in that, so as part of your packet this evening and the request for council action, you have. Uh, the planning reports that were presented to the planning commission, there's also the minutes of the planning commission meetings from August fifteenth and the draft minutes from October seventeen. Um, the city council can consider as part of your discussion whether to support the application or not, uh, the conference of planning. Plan goals and policies related to housing specifically related to those recommendations from the multiple family housing study. Uh, the extent of any PUD flexibilities being requested through the concept plan and whether those are appropriate. How the proposed development fits within the area in which it's located, as I said, the planning commission. Uh, felt strongly and recommended approval only of alternative two east of Quade because of concerns about. Transitioning from a multiple family development to the single family neighborhoods west of Quade Avenue. And then you have the public comments and questions, uh, for your review as well.
Thank you, Dan. Does a developer wish to comment?
Good evening, um, I'm Mary Beth Wise, my address is one zero eight one, Fourth Street Southwest in Forest Lake. Thank you for having us here.
I'm Mike Salt, address is nine two five, New Hall Drive in Faribault.
Okay, again, thanks for having us here, we appreciate it. We are in Norhart. I just want to give you just a brief background, I won't take much time on this, but our, um, outlook is to create a better way. To live for our residents, we build and manage awesome apartments and we truly do obsess over the resident experience. We build places that where we'd want to live. Um, that guides us. An example of something we built in Lexington Lofts, which is, um, in Circle Pines. This is one example. And this is another example, this is in Oakdale, it's called Impact Apartments, just to give you a idea of our look. As Dan explained, this is the location up Quade Avenue. Where the building is proposed. This is an aerial view of the layout. The parking as discussed is under the easement, the overhead easement. The green shaded area does outline the entire nineteen point sixty-six acres. So we're coming to you asking for some feedback on three areas mostly, density. We would like to utilize the nineteen point sixty-six square feet for the complete resident experience, I know Dan mentioned it's the building. Footprint and parking is about seven acres, but we would like to utilize the nineteen point sixty-six. The area north of it is going to be used as walking paths. For the residents and also for snow shoeing or for cross-country skiing, it will be utilized as an amenity. Also, the parking spaces, um, we would like to utilize the Norhart data from previous, um. Information we have to drive the covered versus surface parking ratios. We typically design what the resident needs, how many parking spaces are needed. And like to eliminate empty parking spaces, so when you pull up to the building, you're not looking at an empty parking lot with. Half the cars just filling it, it doesn't, it's not as aesthetically pleasing to look at that. We're also requesting reduced parking ratios and covered parking ratios. And just to note, our counts for parking also include ten percent visitor parking, parking. The last thing, um, is the building height of our building. We are looking for an approval for a fifth story, which is only two feet higher than the neighboring hotel. So this is three areas we are looking for your feedback. Just to give you an overview, the parking spaces, Atsigo requires. Two parking spaces per unit, so which for this case would be six hundred and fourteen parking spaces. Our plans are for five hundred and eighteen, which is one point six seven per unit. Um, and it within that five hundred and eighteen, just a side note, a hundred and thirty-five are covered and three hundred and eighty-three are surface. And based on our history, studios and one bedrooms do not need two parking spaces, they typically need one. There's only one person typically in a studio, um, and oftentimes in a one bedroom. So if you're going off of Norhart parking, um, demand and including a ten percent extra that we always provide. Each studio needs one point one zero spaces. One bedroom needs one point fifty-five spaces, two bedrooms is one point eighty-five. And three bedrooms is one point ninety-seven. So given this information, we have, we're proposing three hundred and seven units. The parking spaces needed, based on the unit ratio targets, which I'll outline in a minute. Are four hundred and eighty-four parking spaces, that is what is needed for this complex. Um, and that ratio is one point five eight, again, we are providing five hundred and eighteen. Units, excuse me, parking spaces, which is one point six seven, um, per unit. I hope I didn't go through that too quickly. Um, to give you, um, an idea, we typically are unit ratio targets, a studio is twenty percent. A one bedroom is forty percent. Um, a two bedroom is twenty-five percent of the complex and three bedrooms make up ten percent of the complex. The entire building layout has not been finalized yet, this is just a target that we typically like to follow. I wanted to give you a list of all of the amenities that we provide and again, we build where we would want to live. So these are amenities we know people enjoy, they're used. For instance, we provide a coffee station free in the lobby for everybody, there's fitness and yoga, there's their dog runs, um. Movie theaters, the list goes on and on. And lastly, in-mended amenities are amazing, washer and dryers, you're gonna have granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. The list goes on. Our buildings are great for communities, they build and grow communities, they provide upscale living. They provide increased local patronage, people shop where they live, um, they create local jobs. And the city gets our tax revenue. We truly hope to be here in Atsigo and welcomed and provide a great building and amenities to, um, the residents in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Comments from council, Mary Beth, can you go back to your parking? Slide.
That one?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect, this is a question for Dan. Dan, on the three other apartment units that we have. Um, was there any concessions on lowering their parking standards or do we have them meet what we expected?
Mayor, they all met those standard. Including the one stall per enclosed garage.
Tom?
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, with that, when we did the two thousand eighteen, uh, study, did we look at lowering? Any, any parking?
Mayor, so the current standard of two stalls per dwelling unit is based on Institute of Transportation Engineers parking demand data. Um, as we explained to the planning commission, if we. As we explained to the planning commission, if we were looking at a development stage application with a specific unit breakdown, we could look closer at the I T E data to see if there is the feasibility to reduce it. The I T E data says if, you know, the ratio of bedrooms to units is lower, obviously there's smaller parking demand. So what was explained to the planning commission is that would be an area that could be reviewed if it was based on actual traffic counts for their existing buildings or I T E data. Planning Commission was willing to some extent to consider that, but they also felt strongly about the one enclosed stall per dwelling standard.
But Madam Mayor, as far as the two thousand and eighteen study did.
It was actually lowered from two point five stalls to two stalls.
I'd like to add one thing just to clarify. For the covered parking, the underground parking, that is a paid amenity. So you, the residents will pay for that amenity. So a lot of them choose to not pay for that. And so that's why we have more surface parking, but have that option for them. We don't want to provide more parking down there that's not going to be utilized and not have it on the surface. So based on our data and we know how the residents operate, this is where we come up with our numbers. It's not just what's going to fit. It's really what is going to be utilized best for the space and what the tenants would use and like.
I'm willing to make some comments if no one else has anything right now. So I was present at the August, I was via Zoom. Tom was there, Tina, me. And then I was here in October too, where I was in the audience and Jeff and Brad and Ron Zoom. So I think all the councils very aware of this. And as we said, this is the opportunity for ideas to come forward. Which is a nice thing, I guess, for developers that you get to get input. We're not legally bound. You're not legally bound to what you're putting forth on this thing. I'll tell you, I have some issues with this. We already have four hundred apartment rooms. And everything is located in the northeast quadrant of our city and we've built these in the last four years. I have, I go along with the residents that I have concerns with the traffic that this is going to put on there. And I have issues with the adjacent property owners and how that will transition over. I think there's plenty of land in Atsigo that everything doesn't have to be focused on that northeast quadrant. We have, we did the housing study to show where these options could go. And as Dan said, this was put in in twenty eighteen and our first apartment building was built in twenty eighteen, July of twenty eighteen. So I don't support this going in that location. I think there's multiple issues with it that I just don't feel it's a good fit. This has nothing to do with your company. You put a great presentation together, but Atsigo is a very large parcel of property and land tracts, and I think there's a better location that it could go. That's my comments at this time.
And I'll follow up with that. I actually concur with the mayor. I don't know if you've looked at other sites in Atsigo, but I don't want another apartment building right by the Mississippi. It's, it's a beautiful location and I think we owe it to ourselves as a city to put something different there, not another apartment complex. Not to say that this couldn't happen in Atsigo, but I would, I would hope that you would take a look elsewhere in Atsigo to put this apartment complex. Maybe over on the west side. We need some love over there. So. But yeah, at, at this point with, with the property that you're, the area that you're choosing, I, I wouldn't support it either.
Tom?
Madam Mayor, just a guess, a question for Dan. The two thousand and eighteen study, we adopted. When was that adopted?
Mayor, it was adopted at the end of twenty eighteen.
And it has not changed the current zoning and the comprehensive plan as of yet, correct?
Correct.
And that's something that's under review right now.
Correct.
I guess one of the concern, well, let me start out by saying when I look at this concept, I love the concept. It, it looks like you guys put out a good product. I guess a question right now is kind of timing. And location right now, and those kind of work together. Those are my main concerns and why, when I look at this concept as of right now, given all the other apartment buildings that we have recently approved in the city. I would like to see this product over on the other end where we've just started working on expanding our sewer system over there. I, I would, I would love to see this product in Atsigo, just not at this location at this time. I've been driving down Parrish essentially forty-four years. Familiar with the, the traffic issues. Like Mr. Mulker, who was, uh, came up and talked this evening. There are many issues on that road. I'm afraid when I look at this, I'm going to see a lot of people heading down Quade and getting off next to where the Holiday is, which I hate going down or exiting onto Parrish at that site. I actually go all the way down to thirty-nine to take the roundabout. I know some people did not like the roundabouts that were discussed at thirty-nine. I'm, I was initially against roundabouts. But given the data, given the, the type of accidents that happened there versus signalized intersection. I have been converted to believing in, in roundabouts, even though it takes a little while to get used to unless you've been to Europe many times. And I hope that is something that we look at in the future on Parrish. I think Commissioner Black had said at the August meeting that she will exit out onto Parrish, go down to the roundabout and turn around in order to go back.
To the north, yes.
And that's just how unsafe kind of that, that road is right now. And when you looked at the traffic study, you saw a lot of those accidents happening down kind of where the Boondocks and Holiday and all that, all that intersection is. As far as the parking goes, we did look at this. We did go from two point five to two. If we were going to change that, I would want to relook at that, sit there and see what independent data we get as far as to why we can justify lowering that even further if this was a product that you did bring to Atsigo. Those are kind of my, my comments for now.
Any other comments?
I, I did have a question for Dave. Dave, given that this is a concept plan brought before the city and not preliminary plat where they've essentially gone through the statutory process of making ma- making a formal application is as far as like when you make motions to support or motions not to support, is that necessary or?
Mayor, Council, I don't think any formal motion is necessary. There's no action before the council that's requested this time. I understand it's just a, a review and comment type of situation. So I don't think any formal, I mean, I think the comments are all probably useful to the staff and the developer, but I don't think a formal motion is requested at this time.
And, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, we are able to deny this though based on the housing study, which does tell us that timing and location is a reason to deny something.
Correct.
And Madam Mayor, the only point I was trying to lay out with the two thousand and eighteen housing study that we did is that it hasn't really been formally adopted and put into the comprehensive plan.
Mayor, so it was approved by the city council. The intent would be to incorporate those recommendations as part of the current conference of plan update. Those recommendations could be incorporated as part of a P U D district for this development if it were to move forward with support.
And in order to change a comprehensive plan, though, we would have a public hearing and get further comments from the public as far as the changes that incorporating the housing, two thousand and eighteen housing study.
Yes.
So in our packet though, as Tom said, there is options to deny this. Or to not show support for it, I guess was, is your technical wording. Would you like us to go ahead? I'm looking to staff. Dave is saying no. Dan, you're kind of saying yes. I'm just typing.
I mean, it sounds like, I don't know if you need, you can do it by formal resolution or I think you've done it a lot by your comments, but it sounds like the council is not supportive of this project in this location, although it might be supportive of a similar project to a different location. So.
But then they would have to bring a concept forward. So I mean, I, I feel as though we probably need to put this one. If we don't support it, we should put it to bed.
As a courtesy to the developer, I think you should probably do, have a formal expression of all the comments you've already kind of made.
And just have a question real fast. I know you're not a fan of it in this location. Does moving it north? No. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Sorry. That's, that's my comment. No.
I would agree.
Mayor, just to be clear, it's not necessarily within the property. It's the property, correct?
The property. Yep. Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that.
Do not support this on that property.
Madam Mayor?
Are you good? I was going to make a motion if you. Okay. I will make a motion to not support the P U D concept plan based on the findings that the request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and recommendations on the twenty eighteen multiple housing or multiple family housing study.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything at this time? All right. We will move on to commission liaison updates. Heritage Preservation Commission.
We have not met. We will meet in December.
All right. Next would be the Park of Back Commission. We were able to, we just met last week. It seemed, it really was last week. We were going over concept plans for school note park that will be coming back to the commission. We had H K G I present at that with some input on equipment. There is some issues with the tennis courts and the basketball courts. It will be a larger discussion with the full council. That would be a C I P issue that we need to discuss in regards to what that entails. That will be our first park that we will be. It's, it's meeting its twenty year benchmark and going on to about twenty-two years. So it will be the first part that we, we would be redoing. We also just gave updates on recreation planning that they have and then setting it up for sanity and then recap of the pumpkin patch, which was very well attended. Next is planning commission. Tom?
Well, Norhart was item number two at the last planning commission and item number one was Aldi. And we can let Dan talk a little bit more about that, but it was essentially in the same spot as the Quick Trip. And it was approved five nothing.
And Dan, that will be coming back.
November fourteenth is the target. The city attorney needs to draft those site improvement performance agreement.
All right. Public safety. Tina and I were unable to attend that evening. So Jeff was there in.
Yes, it was nice to meet all the, all six commissioners and also Deputy Lynn and our area E M T. Looks like the number one calls are falls. So just basically please Atsigo be careful. And that was it.
Number one calls are falling, falling. Okay.
Everyone calls because of falls. Be careful.
Okay. There's your public service announcement. All right. We will move on to staff reports and updates. Sabrina?
Thank you, Mayor. No updates for me.
All right. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. No updates tonight.
I draw.
Thank you, Mary. I do have a couple of updates. Direct balloting starts next Tuesday, November first. And that goes through Monday, November first during office hours and additionally on Saturday, November fifth from ten to three. And just also the polls will be open on November eighth from seven to eight. And finally, the general election results will be canvassed on November fourteenth.
All right. Thank you. Dave?
Nothing to report. Thanks, Mayor.
Dan?
Mayor, nothing for you.
None?
Mayor, just a couple of street updates. Caddler Avenue, the quarter mile that the Dakota Supply Group is putting together from just north of the Michaels, the quarter mile north. Goes across Atsigo Creek. That's at gravel level at this point. So it'll be putting curb on starting next week. And then if possible, pavement on that portion first layer later in November before the asphalt plants close. But we'll be watching that closely, you know, for next year to see if any repairs are needed because it is being a, a late year application, cold weather. We'll have to cover the concrete and make sure that temperatures are correct outside.
I know that you said we have like a warranty and we'll be watching that, but if anything, I guess, have you seen products fail that they've got in this late? Are, are we concerned with that?
No, we, we put temperature sensors underneath them to make sure that when they do cover them, that they, they retain that heat this time of year. The ground's still pretty warm. So covering the plastic keeps them pretty warm and concrete produces its own heat also. So I'm not too concerned about that. The weather's been excellent for doing this type of work. And as long as the temperatures are forty and rising, they can go ahead and pave. You just have to be more conscious about keeping the trucks tarped and getting the rollers on the asphalt quickly.
Okay.
Then the other item is Prairie Point. The streets in there are paved. They paved them during M E A week, which was great. So the trucks were not conflicting with the school.
Yeah.
So I expect Adia Street and Martin Avenue, which are the replacements of Marlowe and Eighty-third to be opening up in the next several weeks after signage is placed.
Thank you. Jason?
All right. Try to be quick. Just two things. I'll, I want to just be the follow-up, I guess, on to other residents on eighty-fifth and Nashua. I just had a conversation with them. One of the concerns I had about just kind of the detailing and trying to be able to document why there is an issue there is going to be difficult. One of the reasons is, and this is coming from somebody who stares at traffic all day with the radar on and constantly is evaluating speeds, et cetera. That they're in an area with that roundabout. Naturally, when people are exiting the roundabout, they're going to be accelerating, try to compensate for that lost time in the roundabout. So you're going to be having the people accelerating. At the same time, the location of the residence is slightly uphill. So people are naturally going to be a little bit more on throttle because they're trying to get up the hill in speed. As well as when you are looking at something that has slight curves, your eyes naturally think that a car is coming at you faster than what they really are, probably about ten percent, fifteen percent less of what you could typically see because of how the cars are coming through. So the perception there is obviously going to be difficult to prove the actual, what's actually happening. So even if we have a speed trailer out there, I even offered, I'll go park my squad car in your driveway. And you can sit in my passenger seat with a radar on it. We can kind of evaluate what's going on. That's not to say there isn't, or isn't a problem. It's just going to be difficult to have that documentation showing, yep, there a hundred percent is an issue here. And when you do evaluate the, the, the speed limit change. Otherwise, the only other real update I have is Halloween is next week. Pretty serious time to be perfectly honest with you. I really try to encourage and enforce the different driving regulations. We still cannot have A T Vs out on the roads. I realize people like to jump on the A T Vs with snowmobile trailers. We've had issues with that across the county in the past. I understand it's going to happen. I'm not going to go out there and give tickets to everybody that's doing it. However, we need to make sure people are doing. We've had issues with that across the county in the past, I understand it's going to happen, I'm not gonna go out there and give tickets to everybody that's doing it, however, we need to make sure people are doing it in a safe, slow, responsible manner. And if there are any issues, we are going to take them very seriously. So I will say that and that's all I have for an update.
And I just want to thank you for, you know, having you always attend our meetings because we're able to call you up as there was that issue tonight, the three residents, so sorry to put you on the spot sometimes like that, but obviously it's best to get the information from you and you're the one that's going to be the one enforcing it, so again, thank you for always attending the meetings and trying to jump in and kind of give your background on that, so.
And then again, you get to go back and talk with them separately about
Right, it's always nice to be able to go off the record with them and like to address their concerns in a manner that they would like to, so that's always nice, but no, that's, I'm never short on words as you guys know.
Right, and I was gonna say to your point now, on, on the on the traffic, I mean, I look back to years ago, Oakwood Needham, we had residents that were, you know, claiming these cars are going sixty miles an hour and, and I remember Deputy saying, we'll sit here, we'll get the speedwagon, and at that time we only had one. And it was, as you said, people have, you hear, you hear the car accelerating and you assume it's playing a little faster, I'm not saying that there's not people driving fast on that road, I'm not, I'm not making any claims to that, but I think it'll be good that we can have the data, as Ron said, getting the speedwagon out there and see what we can do to help lower that if, if in fact we, we do see that and it's kind of that perfect storm, I'm sure as you're going up the hill and you're coming out of the roundabout, as you said. Thank you.
Thanks, as always, Jason.
I'm certain.
All right, does anyone else have anything? Then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. The meeting is ended, thank you all for attending this evening, online and in person.